Yeah.
Dollar blank.
A new baby.
A new baby.
Yes, yes. Really tough.
Was it sick at first?
Well, the first little bit, sure. Little, little early and she had some lung, her lungs weren't completely developed, so they had to stuff them in a lot for a few days. But nothing.
It's still scary.
Yeah. No. You didn't bring the lung. You couldn't go into hospital, you couldn't leave.
Yeah.
Didn't make it.
Is there a sign?
Sorry, is there a sign?
She's home now and she's fine.
Signing, no, it's a signature.
I found them here.
I typically just mark the folks, the names at the top. I expect Craig to be here, I was just waiting, so.
Okay.
Scarlett Ann.
And I caught a mistake on this agenda. It was a cut and paste job. I did not change my date up at the top. It should be in August eighteen instead of July twenty-one.
Are there any extra copies?
Yes, sir, on the center of the table. If you would correct the date that's on the agenda, reflect it. I have five, so let's go ahead and start and hopefully the other two members can join us. The minutes of your previous meeting, your July meeting, were sent out by email and the treasurer's report was included with that. If you would accept that or present any corrections or changes, Scott?
Uh, here is a slight change on the second page.
Minutes?
Yep. Of the minutes, about halfway down, it starts with the sentence, "The next agenda item dealt with the possibility of hiring retail strategy."
Correct.
Uh, it says that I and Brian have already attended a conference and I did not attend that conference and I'm not scheduled to attend the next conference. That was Brian and Natalie Knudsen and the mayor.
Okay.
I have been involved in a subsequent meeting since then with retail strategy, but I did not have attended either of the conferences.
Robert, can you make the correction? Sure.
Make a motion to accept the minutes with that situation.
Second motion on the minutes.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor say aye. Opposed say no. They are opposed. Your financial report was included with the minutes. It shows an ending balance hundred fifty-three thousand two twenty-one fifty and no activity in or out since our previous meeting. A motion and a second to accept the financial report.
Make the motion to accept.
Your second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Craig, there's an agenda if you need it. Start down through some agenda items there, not in any particular order. The first one deals with sewer access on Anderson property as I had communicated by an email to you. Mr. Anderson had made contact with me a few weeks ago and they were attempting to put the sewer and water in for his construction project. The water was no problem, but the sewer did not join his property. There is another property owner who would need to provide an easement to get the sewer line from the point it needs to tap to Anderson's property. And I've got these are some notes that I have made. The one goes back to the contract that we signed and then there are a couple of maps that are behind those. The one, give one back to me, Robert, and get away mine. In section twelve A of the contract, it reads utilities including water, sanitary sewer, gas, electric, telephone are available at the boundary of the property which may or may not fall into the buyer's purchase area. Seller does not make any representations or warranties as to the sufficiency or capacity of such utilities and buyer shall satisfy as to such matters as part of its own due diligence. Mr. Anderson had a six-month window from the time we signed until the time we closed and then this particular issue was not brought up for about another six months. So we're really talking about a year from the time that the contract was first signed by both parties. So when you look at due diligence, that's one thing to keep in mind. When we look at the, the second sheet in that shows the, the property based on the survey that was done and we're talking tract one, which became Anderson's, nine point eight-five acres. Page two of that is a map that I was given by the water and sewer department. The last sewer main ends roughly at the intersection of Clayhorn Street and Halltown Road, Old Halltown and Clay. There is no sewer along Halltown that joins Mr. Anderson's property and there's not any sewer along Industrial Drive which joins the other side of his property. You can see on the map that reflects, and it would be this map, that reflects the sewer, water and sewer department. There is a small triangular shaped sliver of property on the left, lower left side of Anderson's and that belongs to Old Time Express. And the sewer would need to be, the easement would need to be across that small triangular shaped piece of property to get to the edge of what Anderson purchased Trump's. I talked to Mark White off the record a week or so ago, told him the situation and just posed a question to him, would he be open to negotiating an easement if that was necessary? And he indicated that he would. He said he shot a number of fifteen hundred dollars for such an easement. I also had a conversation with Brandon Baller, our, the county's attorney, yesterday relative to this matter. I sent Brian the same kind of information that I sent out to the board members so that he also knew what was going on. His recommendation was well, it was twofold. One, this probably should have been discovered at a sooner date, but since it wasn't, that and if an easement can be acquired through the Old Time Express property, the simplest thing to do would be to acquire that lease and then let the, and let the IDB acquire the lease and then Mr. Anderson be responsible for the installation of his sewer line. This would provide for a gravity-fed sewer line, which is what he needs for his operation. Brandon did say that if we would like to dial him in this afternoon, he is available for phone hookup and will provide input and answer any questions that the board might have. So I've kind of put him on standby for that. I'm gonna pause at this juncture, I've kind of given you some background information and then we'll see what direction the board wishes to go. Brian?
Is it, that, that is an undeveloped piece of triangle property down there. I guess I'm a little curious about why is, was it typically customary to have to pay somebody for an easement for a utility?
Sometimes yes, sometimes no.
I mean, if we were tearing up the parking lot or disrupting the business, I absolutely understand, but I don't know, a piece of undeveloped grassland down there in that valley seems, seems a little unusual to me. But that being said, I, I, I agree, it probably should have been caught earlier, but we as sellers basically misrepresented it as far as I can read and we just gotta do what we gotta do, but. So I, I would probably support, you know, fulfilling our contract as it read and I just think it's a little bit, it seems a little uncustomary to have to pay for a city easement. That being said.
Point taken.
And so
Yes, sir.
The, the question I sent you back on email was, okay, we've got the cost of the easement, but you were saying, my question back to you was, are we also responsible for paying for the sewer line to be run? But I think you answered that question by saying that he was gonna be responsible for that one.
Uh, and that was also based on Mr. Baller's recommendation. He recommended that the, if the IDB incurred a cost of easement, then Anderson would incur cost of construction. It appears that that easement, the length of that would be somewhere between three hundred, four hundred feet. I'm not sure it's been accurately measured, but that's what's been shared with me.
So what I'm hearing is we're both sharing some responsibility for it.
Correct.
This, this may be a little off topic, but on this map, we'll see a two point seven three at IDB and the thirty-one-two-nine where the convenience center is, that's not currently under IDB ownership, is it?
No. This map, although it does reflect where the water and the sewer lines go, it is not accurate in terms of property boundaries. It was a map that the water and sewer department had that showed where the water and especially the sewer lines ran, but it is not up to date in terms of current boundaries. Go by the survey map previous to that for the proper boundaries and the proper shafts. Other thoughts, board members?
Says contract, by the contract that the sewer would be available at the boundary. I know there's been all this time, but it seems like to me that's, we were supposed to ensure.
We didn't catch it, he didn't catch it. I know there's a long due diligence time period that went on through this, but it was not caught till about a month ago.
Money is money, but maybe fifteen hundred dollars is not an astronomical amount to strike this out.
That was Mr. Baller's recommendation as well.
He's sharing some costs and we are too, so we're both missed it, so we're both paying a little bit.
And, and if this board is willing to go that route, I did ask Mr. Baller if he would draft the wording for the easement and he said he would, so there will be some additional cost for his legal work on top of the cost of the easement. So I would like for you to authorize that to happen if you would, if you're inclined to make a motion to that effect.
What exactly would you need us to make a motion beyond authorization to facilitate the easement language? Do you need us to authorize this easement purchase up to a certain dollar amount or are we not there yet?
I'm not sure if we're there on, on a final price. We just had a preliminary discussion, but if you wanted to authorize up to a certain dollar, then I'll certainly negotiate with him, with Mark White. And then I would like for you to include some language in, in your motion that will authorize me to follow through on this and act and sign and get this finished.
I think there probably need to be two separate motions, so I would be happy to make a motion to authorize Mr. Baller as chairman to work with Mr. Baller on the easement legal contract and.
I could present that back to the board members if it spins off and occurs before the next meeting by email so that you'll know what the language in that is.
That'd be great.
Have a motion to execute an easement and authorize the chair to do that.
Sir.
Have a second. Other discussion?
Is there any benefit to Mr. White for this line being on his property at that point? I didn't think so, but.
I think it's such a narrow sliver of property, it does not present usable options for him either. It's just a point that the sewer needs to hook up. Yes, ma'am.
Why is the industrial development board getting the easement and not Anderson, Mr. Anderson? I mean, he owns the property, why is he not getting the easement?
He owns the property, but in the contract that we signed, we did warrant that if the utilities were available at his boundary, which they are not. So we're trying to correct a small misrepresentation that occurred in that contract. Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye. Opposed say no. And then if you would, would wish to put a dollar cap on this, realizing too that at, at some point we will receive a bill for legal services, I don't know what those will be.
Well, I guess I can finish the second part of that. I'd be happy to make a motion to authorize the chair to negotiate with Mr. White for an easement on the sewer on said property up to fifteen hundred dollars, but in the motion to also authorize the necessary legal fees for the previous motion.
Okay. Your second.
That's it.
Craig, second. Discussion. Clear on what you're voting on? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, say no. It does pass. Next, we had discussed at the last meeting, the application for the request of funds. Come in. Now Heather, here's one back here in the corner. Keep bringing our agenda.
Yes, sir, if it, if it's not changed, I'm good.
It has not changed, but correct the date at the top. I did discuss cut and paste and I didn't change the date. And we're at the point of the agenda that we're discussing the application that you went through some edits on for us.
Okay.
Subject to our last month's discussion, Heather did edit this and it is being presented to the board in a draft, but if acceptable, we'll take draft off of it and let this be the final so that we could give to prospectus and allow them to complete for a request of any funds that the IDB might be able to offer for their particular business or venture. There were quite a few more statements added, especially regarding the company financials that are not included in the first draft, first version. Is everyone pleased with this draft?
I'm afraid I haven't seen a follow-up.
Oh, I set that out. Did I not send it out?
Is that the last one?
Yeah, I think so.
I got it from you, man.
If I failed to send, I'm sorry. And I printed my copy off, so there's another one. But if you look toward the back of the document, she had made some, several edit points that included more information for financials. Heather, you wanna throw anything in?
There were, there was a request for more information on financials and then the scope of, or this, more so the scope of the financials, I think, is what it was, and then the formula.
Wanted to know also about any other company financials, are you being partnershiped with anyone, local bank, venture capital, SBA, whatever the financing for the business itself was to be.
Correct. What was it, what, what were stakeholders, that was the, you know, who, who were the stakeholders, who were the owners and what was the requirement for financing for the actual company and the, and the, and the, and the direction in which the organization was going?
And I think you were asking too for some copies of financials and copies of tax returns.
Yes.
So you could very independently verify some of the things being told.
So if this was a new business, it also states that, who are the partners and could the part, and if, if the business has not been organized long enough, then would they provide the partners financials as a backup? This is something that, not necessarily just for this one request, this looks to be a, a good blanket to carry as a model for anyone who comes to, comes to the IDB board requesting to move forward for any, for any request, actually, it's quite neutral. It allows the applicant to request, to make the request, there's.
The IDB has no such document on file at the present time, so anybody coming before the IDB requesting monies really had no process and procedure to go through. This provides them with that mechanism.
This exactly matches the last email form I got of, except for the formatting is better.
Sorry, I'm an Apple person.
Are you an Apple person?
I'm an Apple person.
That explains it. Uh, so I would make a motion to approve this as the formal application document.
That's it. Have a motion and a second to approve this as the application for financial assistance. Other comments?
Could we also be able to add a logo once it is created? Will that window open?
We don't have a logo, but we could certainly add one or we could use the county's, either one.
That was one request that was made that I was not able to fulfill, because I'll fulfill for everyone.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Sixth thing on the agenda. King asked for this to be included. IDB at the present time does not have a website presence. It is not configured as a part of the county's website or configured into, to have an independent one. I put this on here with sort of the question. Mayor, could, I guess this part of the question would be directed to you. Could the IDB have a component in the county's website?
Yeah, we, we're not limited to the number of pages we actually have, so I think we can just create a new page and put information for the IDB on that page, same as we did for the water utility.
Okay. There's part of your question answered right there. Scott?
Well, the question being, you know, on the county website or independent, I, I absolutely think it should be on the county website since that is an option for us because most people do not know we exist, would not know to go search for us. If you're a new business coming to this town, you, you're gonna gravitate towards the county website.
Well, and that would put more things in a one-stop-shop configuration, you're more likely to find this accurately listed as a part of the county government. Brian, it's hard for me to see you back there, so wave or say something.
I would agree with Scott, but I do think it's important that we have a, a website to make us more visible and out in the open because while your average small business person may not even know to look at that site, if we were to be prospect recorded by a large company, that's exactly. that's exactly where they would probably go first if they didn't go to Middle Tennessee first. So I, I think it should, and that would also give Tennessee Central, you know, an avenue to say, okay, here's a link to this if you want to investigate bringing your business to our community or give a contact or who to come to if you'd like to appear before the board, so.
And although we do not have staff ourselves in order to talk to clients, talk to prospects, Tennessee Central has agreed to do and provide that role for Trousseau County through the Industrial Development Board. So they are our connection point. And we can certainly put a link to their website for professional assistance too. Scott?
Is that to say that they were going to do the actual programming and set up, you know, the page?
I haven't discussed that part with them. Mayor, who is the county using? Didn't you recently finish updating the counties?
We did. It's myself and Amy Thomas. We're the ones, the only ones in the county that have access to the entirety of the site. Usually each department can edit their own page, but as far as the entirety of the site, only Amy and I have access to that. And I will say the Cookville Industrial Development Board has their pages on the City of Cookville's website. And they just have like the board information on there. Ours, if we set it up, we'll set it up similar to the other boards and commissions where we have links to agendas, minutes, videos through YouTube and whatnot. And then we'll consult with Tennessee Central to see what needs to be included from their point of view and probably put a link to Tennessee Central, Tennessee Department of Economic Community Development, TBA Economic Development. And then the TBA sites has a website where they have industrial sites on there, a lot of power coms, sites on there as well. Include a link from there as well.
What, what kind of costs in generating and maintaining the site are typically?
So we paid $9,000 to have, to work with the company to set up the site. And there's a yearly licensing type fee, I think it's 1,500. So if the board would want to pay a little bit to help maintain the site, that'd be great. But as far as actually setting it up, getting the, the things on there, the, excuse me, the, the information, everything on the site, that'd be me and Amy set it up. Of course, we don't incur any additional expense on that. We'll kind of mop it up and like I said, get feedback from Tennessee Central. That's who really set it up. We have an economic development page where it kind of included a lot of this information, but obviously there was nothing for the IDB. But we can just use kind of that same similar setup and see exactly what needs to be put on there and consult different agencies. And obviously we can send it to the board. Once we get it on there, send it to you on, you can go look at it, see if there's any things you'd like to add or change.
Heather, did you have a comment?
I did. Currently, we do not have a logo or mission statement and those kind of things that would need to be collected to create a Facebook. So at this time, could we make the request to be on the county's website, Hartsfield, Trousseau County website, to be implemented just like the county commissioners are, where it states, and I do not want my mugshot on that, but where it states who's on the board, what people's contacts are. And that would be the first form of communication. And then just a small statement that we spoke of last meeting that we might utilize to, to identify what we, what we're here for. And then once we've created more, which I do believe we do need to create more and I think we need to go forward, but I think it, I don't think we're ready for the site, but I think we need to get ready for the site, so.
And at the same time, I think this will be something that if they take a couple or three meetings before we've gotten information gathered and written and drafted and confirmed that we like this version, but I think it's certainly a step in moving in the right direction.
Would you need that in the form of a motion?
We do.
I want to make a motion that we began the process of developing a webpage and whatever that pay entailed. And I think it probably would not be of that idea. Each member who wished to contribute submitted some sort of rough sketch on what that would look like.
You might search out other industrial development boards or economic development boards from other cities, counties, glean from them and put the page. That's, that's the way a lot of this is done in today's time.
Could I make the request that be altered to social media? Because we might find out, so we don't have to come back for another one for a Facebook page or so on like that. So if you'll make that motion forward, I'll be glad to second it.
Rather than just webpage, webpage, webpage and/or social media.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. White, did you have a question?
I just wanted to say that the biggest problem we encountered with website is getting the information. It's not putting the information on the website anymore. It's getting the information. And the second thing is the county's embarked on an endeavor to try to brand the county with the logo. And we've asked that all departments include the county logo in any letterhead, stationary, advertising webpage, things of that nature. So as far as.
They've got that in a transferable file.
That'd be great.
As far as doing a logo, just do that. And if you can, if you want to change it and incorporate that into a logo, you know, use that and come around it with Industrial Development Board or whatever. That would be okay too.
In an electronic file.
Okay, I would do my best. I would.
Get that as part of your motion, for sure.
But we can get that information to you. I just wanted you to know that that is available.
Thank you. We would not do anything that would have copyright infringement without your permission.
No, 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 no. It's just that we're trying to brand since we've had many different departments.
Everybody did their own thing in the beginning. And it was a hodgepodge.
Completely understand. And we're, we're okay to be underneath that umbrella?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Mayor saying yes.
You can incorporate the county seal and maybe like I was saying, put something around it that says, you know, Industrial Development Board at Hartsfield, Trousseau County. And I do have, I thought I had it here on my Google Drive, but I do have the bylaws and charter and everything like that from the committee, from the board. And I can send that to all of you. That'd be included on the website once we get into all that foundational information.
I appreciate that. That'd be great. I'd love to see that. And so what we do, my work is we have the City of Lebanon's logo. We then need to have a logo with Lebanon in this there for them. And it's right below it. And so that way we know that they're together within all the decisions that are, that are published. We wouldn't want to, we wouldn't want to tweak yours. We'd keep yours as intact as it is, I would think. That's a, that's a, just so y'all know, it's a copyright thing we don't want to get into to incorporate the tape.
We have a motion and a second to move forward with the website and social media efforts. Is there any other discussion regarding that? Not all in favor, say aye. You opposed, say no. Brian, I'd like to ask you if you would run point on the website and work with Heather too.
I bring my intern. Yeah, she knows more than I do.
Next is updates on Retail Strategy Consultant. Scott or Brian, either one have updates?
There's nothing new to report to my knowledge. Since our last meeting, I reached out to Lacy Beasley, who is the president of Retail Strategies in Birmingham. And I sent her the email and she called me. We had a nice long discussion and I kind of gave her the lay of the land and what, what we were brainstorming for the future. And I connected her with you, Mr. Beeler, and Mr. Jewell and the mayor she already connected to as an email chain so they could start to negotiate a, a time that is likely to be sometime in September for Lacy to come up here and give a presentation in person. Now, that's all tentative, given the state of the world. But what I would like to see, in a perfect world, is for Ms. Beasley to come up and hold a presentation in the upper courthouse and with a microphone and a screen. And we have Economic Development, IDB, and anyone from the city council who would like to join, sit in on that so we'd have a room large enough for everybody to be comfortable and distant. But let her do that altogether because I think it would be wise that if this concept comes to fruition and in a couple of years, it may be presented before the city council for partial or full funding, that they're familiar with it on the get-go and can kind of monitor the progress and have input on, you know, helping us succeed with the endeavor. Economic development has, is, is fully supportive and eager to help in whatever way possible. So beyond that conversation that I had with Ms. Beasley on the phone, I don't think upon talking to Mr. Jewell last night that there's been any further communication. But we are currently in the midst of the second Retail Academy. The mayor and I and Ms. Knutson are performing our seminars online due to COVID. And we have homework assignments and then there's going to be a process as working through, rather than it being like a two or three day conference. This is going to take place over several months. So we're in the midst of it. Last year was the one-on-one and we're in two-on-one. And then next year we'll go three-on-one. I would like to add one thing. Retail Strategies has been performing this seminar and training course with, in conjunction with the state of Tennessee. And if I remember this right, Mr. Mayor, correct me if I'm wrong. Says 2016 is what I heard on the film recording. And we are participating in this Retail Academy because of a grant of $10,000 that was made available from the state. So this is just not some private firm that we pulled off of the internet. This is a state-approved, state-grant-funded-to-participate-for-a-lot-of-polls entity. So that gives me even more confidence in the possible investment into, you know, hiring them to help us secure more, more businesses in the future. Because if they've been deadened by the state, then they've probably done much better job than we could do. But we are currently in that now, doing our, our exercises and watching our videos in the two-on-one.
Just wanted to update us and we're still moving forward that late September opportunity to have a face-to-face meeting with several parties from here in the county to further discuss the retail strategies.
I think it's an excellent idea to make it open to Economic Development and the commission. I mean, I think.
They're both groups that need to buy in if this is to be a successful venture.
I agree.
Mr. Harsh, the Chair of Economic Development, has been, he's pretty excited about it. And he's been contacting me on a fairly frequent basis, asking me about any updates and if they could help support in any way. So I'm getting a lot of enthusiastic feedback from the people that are involved. And that makes me feel even more hopeful that we'll have a successful endeavor.
We'll probably keep this on our agenda next month as well. If for no other reason than just to provide you with any updates that we had. And if a meeting, a date has been set for the big meeting, we can communicate that too. I don't think there's any action that needs to vote regarding retail strategies, but we didn't want to keep everybody in the loop and let you know what was going on. I have not had any feedback since our last meeting regarding the pilot, payment in lieu of taxes document. So with your permission, we'll just skip over that tonight. Probably include that back on the agenda for next month and see if we've got some follow-ups. Tennessee Central, if you'll remember back, was going to take the lead and try to edit and revise the pilot document to bring it up to, it was about a three, between a three and a four-year-old document. So there was some wording, some edits, some things that needed to be changed and brought forward. And that's really all I've got on that particular point. Anybody got any questions that I need to try to answer? Also, number nine. I have not had any follow-up from Charlie Lyons at Tennessee Central regarding a request to use some of the grant fund dollars to help pay for a groundwater study. Charlie approached me six weeks or so ago about the possibility of running that through the Industrial Development Board, but he has not followed up. Since then, this was a prospect that they were working, an unnamed prospect at that time, I think still. So I don't know who, what particular company it was for. But no, no follow-up from me on that. So I'll leave that as an open discussion for next month too. Brian?
Am I correct in remembering that we were just going to be a conduit for that?
Yes.
It was going to be, you know, cost neutral for us?
Yes, very cost neutral. We would apply for a grant from Tennessee Central for the dollars that this study would cost. And then the, the study would be borne by us as the Industrial Development Board, but we'd just be a flow through.
Thank you.
Number 10. Carson Jones has talked with this board a few months back when we did a video conference meeting. And we wanted to get you back on our agenda. I know at one time you had presented some options for an application for some funding. You can tell us kind of where you are with your business venture, whether or not there is still a need for some funding assistance. And now we've got an application mechanism that we've approved tonight that as soon as they finish the final cleanup edits, it'll be ready to provide. So Carson, I'll turn the floor over to you. And I think you've got a guest with you. If you need to introduce him, please feel free to do so.
I will. Yeah, so my name's Carson Jones. I haven't met everyone that's here, but I have a few familiar faces. And I appreciate the time that you guys give us to be here. It's been a long, fun story on how we're here. But I'm from northern Utah. I've been in middle Tennessee for about five years in manufacturing. This is Scotty Key. He's local here to Hartsfield. And he was one of the very first people who I hired to help me at the last venture. So I pulled him out of the automotive sector as being a manufacturing engineer, building production lines. And so, you know, our relationship has evolved to the point that we're in this room now and it's our company and, and we're not working for someone else. I don't remember specifically back to kind of an update when I was with you last. I thought it was late November, but it could have been early 2020 as well. And at that time, we were about $330,000 into a $1.2 million venture. That is to install a production line that's a technical variation of plastics to make containers that require barrier. Barrier to keep either oxygen out of the contents or in the application that we're starting out in for fuel, it would be to keep emissions inside the container. And so for about 20 years, the automotive industry has had this technology fairly locked up just because of the capital cost to get in. And so from the point in time that we met last, I was about $330,000 in personally in acquiring a machine and kicking off the retrofit of the machine with the original manufacturer to get a new component so that the machine could make fuel tanks, large parts, instead of dairy containers like it used to. to get a new component so that the machine could make fuel tanks, large parts, instead of dairy containers like it used to. All the small Slim Fast bottles, this machine we have, it used to make those, the small Gatorade bottles. I have tooling that goes in the machine and I can make little Gatorade bottles. So we're just simply taking a good machine and modifying a main component of it. More so out of experience and confidence than working with the manufacturer than anything. And so as it relates to today, with the pandemic and everything, we had this build out for $226,000 of the 1.2 million. So that money directly correlated with the subject property in the PowerCom Industrial Park, which we have now executed a lease agreement on. We do have a first payment, you know, we already paid some first and last, but we have our first payment next month. They gave us a few more months to get our fee under us. But we look now to be production capable here at Thanksgiving. We kind of had our eyes set on Halloween, but with a few of the more recent things of actually getting started and actually spending money. We've got contractors coming in every day down at the facility. The utility company, or I'm sorry, not the utility company, the water department has got our water in. Our fire line is in, the fire suppression company is hanging a pipe. But we've got roof things going on fixing the building. And more than anything, the next phase of where I was at with you guys was that I had about $350,000 to send to the machine manufacturer for this big component to make these parts. And so now the timing of all that's converged, but during COVID, the biggest thing that we learned that changed kind of the business plan with trying to time production capable and customer from a revenue standpoint and now like cash burn for months and months. You know, we just couldn't get over the hurdle where we're not an established company. It's been really hard to be a startup, just, you know, even in talking about your document for working with a startup versus a new company. It's just, or I mean, an existing company. So in that sense, it's been really hard to get traction. It took a lot longer to close our financing, but in mid-July, when we closed financing, we got three quarters of a million dollars in equipment. And we got $130,000 in a revolver or a line of credit to get things going. And so as it stands now through COVID, we still don't have a firm contract. But because my long lead time has surpassed so far to, you know, the forefront of today, we're going to be capable here this this fall to make parts. And our whole goal and focus is to get the facility where it will pass an audition. And I hear you talking about retail strategy. We have to try to figure out what time our visuals are going to be capable of bringing Still and Toro and Husqvarna, John Deere, Polaris. I've had physical conversations with them, emails, phone calls. They're all real prospective customers because of capability. These machines aren't out there and ready for use. In that scenario, I just wanted to give Scotty a second because he's now taken the forefront of that responsibility to not only bring the production line to life, but also to run the contracting of the building while I'm out trying to make the money to cash flow this thing and not use my loan funds for anything. So I'm going to let Scotty just introduce him for just a second.
Pardon me. Heather Ray. Scotty, what, do you have a title yet? Sounds like there's going to be a Q and A operations manager that kind of.
He's the plant manager and he's an owner. He's my partner in this year.
Thank you.
My name is Scotty Key. I'm born and raised here in Lafayette, between Trousel County and Macon County. And we're, we're always going to Wilson and Sumner and always wanted to be a part of trying to put something back in Trousel County to keep people closer to home. Give them a decent paying job, take care of them and not, not seeing all the money pass through Trousel County. So we're just trying to get all the machine and stuff prepped and make it appearable for when we audition for these companies, you know. It's kind of, we're kind of back in the hole, so to speak, but we want to try to make those guys know that we're capable of doing anything that they need. We'd like to be up and running, you know, 25, 30 employees by May.
May I ask a question? And for the clarification of myself and everyone else in here, the major component that you got funded for is indeed tooling specific to a customer's product, correct?
No.
Not necessarily.
No.
Okay. So what?
We've got, we've got a machine that we can make tooling for for multiple customers. Not one specific.
You've gotten approved from loan monies to improve the machine to accept the kind of tooling that you want to do. Is that, is that fair to say?
And to refresh everyone's memory before we go too much further. Carson's project at PowerCom is to create some molded fuel containers for a variety of small engine applications. Each of them, the different brands utilize a molded fuel tank. And that's what his equipment will produce is that molded fuel tank built to company specs. Am I correct in summarizing that?
That's correct.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure the group was caught up on what you actually do. Because it's been several months since a few of us saw you face to face.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I probably skipped over some of that and getting to the.
You made an assumption.
Yes. I do that a lot.
Now Scotty, go ahead if you've got more.
I've just, you know, we're, the building's probably set vacant for several years and we're just trying to really make it look nice and presentable. That way when we bring these guys, you know, through town, that they see that Trousel County is a capable place to sell their product.
They're in one of the older TVA buildings on the backside of PowerCom. There, on the riverside. They've got a.
Thirty-two thousand.
Thirty-two thousand square feet.
They've actually got two 16 buildings that were built together. Two 16,000 buildings, 16,000 square foot buildings that were merged together and they kind of merged with a roof system and a common gutter there. And the building was one of the original constructed TVA buildings that would probably go back into the seventies. I'm not sure what the actual date of construction was, but that's what he has leased from PowerCom as his startup, beginning his, his business plan. That kind of bring everybody up to speed. So if you haven't been out there, you can kind of visualize what he's got. And you've already got your equipment, your mold is here.
Our machine.
It was, it was here back in the.
October.
Fall, I think, wasn't it?
Yes, sir.
I have a question, if it's appropriate.
Go ahead.
This has a little more about your, your future logistics. So let's say hypothetically Toro comes in and they want you to make a fuel container for a particular piece of equipment that they build. I know they will give you engineering schematics and drawings and whatever you need to produce their proprietary shapes. Who fronts the money on the mold mockup? Because I understand from one of my clients that that can be quite expensive. $50,000 or more to have a mold built. And or will they come in and provide you with that mold? Since it is proprietary, who eats that cost and what's your? You know, if Toro, if you start at Thanksgiving and Toro shows up December 1st, how long before you can actually start building containers?
Yeah, it ties into a little bit of what Scott asked about what we spent so much money on. So what we have is just a capability range that usually references tank geometry by volume gallons. In blow molding, they usually say we can make from this size to this size. And so we're in a situation where we, we can run anywhere from a gallon up to a three gallon with variation in geometry, right? It can be a little bit odd, but not too terribly odd because that creates some, some weird things. But once our machine is in general capable for an operation in that range, everything that's specific to your tank and her tank and his tank are your costs and her costs and his costs. And so in the contract, when we get ready to write up volume and basically what they're saying they're going to purchase of our capacity. Because we really aren't going to sell tanks so much as we'll be selling capacity. And so in those relationships, everything will come down to articles specific is for the customer. But we work heavily with them to ensure that that functions properly, right? Using some.
It's a raw piece. It's not installation ready.
Right.
So they'll have to mold their tabs or mounting brackets or whatever they need to make it fit their piece of equipment?
They should come from us ready to install. They, they may choose to put some extra labor on it on their end with any post operations. If my price was too high or if they already have some way to do it, you know, if Husqvarna had a unique test they wanted to do before they put it on where they add some tabs. That's all done in the, in the quoting process, I would think.
But you have to front the mold cost?
No. All articles specific to make something is on the customer. And our, our machine is at a, at a capable range this Thanksgiving or so, where we can make anything we put in it that fits that range. They just have to provide the tool. In a lot of cases, we'll get tooling that already exists. And this is one of Scotty's specialties that go back longer than I've been alive to do very unique things with metal, to take somebody's tool that they ran at another company, say in Missouri. And we can just take the back off of it and put a new back on it so it fits in ours. So I mean, I make that sound really easy, but you know, it depends on the customer. Is it a new product? Is it first a new zero-turn mower coming out in 2022? Or is it an existing product where a supplier had a machine problem and they don't have product and they got that product now? So it'd be totally stipulated by that circumstance. But all, all articles specific is the customer's cost.
Do you have to inventory that product until you get a trailer load of it?
Most everything will be full truck load. Yeah. We should have between eight and 12 trucks a week when we're into. I wish I could say quarter one, but it will probably be quarter two before we're really at that level. But we should have somewhere between eight to 12 trucks between some deliveries of pellets and the pickup of finished goods with the customer who we are taking to production for about 75% of the machine's capacity.
If I remember, about 25% of your square footage was actual production, the rest was material storage and after-bought storage. Is that correct?
Yeah. Until we can get to a point where, you know, circumstances would allow us to bring in some more infrastructure, which is kind of where we got to with the property and, and with Tennessee Central on whether or not they wanted us down there long-term. For us, we need to be getting into silos as fast as possible so we can reduce the handling of all these pellets. And I mean, I don't want to get into the minutia of, of those details, but for the most part, the facility is set up where we can put this one production machine in there. And we should do about, you know, eight to 12 operators right out of the gate to do about 200,000 in revenue. And that's about eight to 12 trucks and traffic and the, and the eight to 12 employees right from the get-go. But long-term, we're looking to have a facility either where we're at, added on, which I should have brought my blueprints that we just got through engineering and STEM. We're working with Tony Goldie to start the power in Trigg County. But we have fixedured on there in addition to where we can get to about $25 million in capital equipment and up to 100 employees. So we intend to be one of the bigger manufacturers. There's only two other companies that are doing something similar. But that's the long-term thought process is that we, we really need more square footage than where we're at. We're going to put a very bare minimum amount of capital in that we require. And, you know, quite frankly, the reason I asked for help and why we're here today is the timing between when I first talked to you and when I thought we were going to be in production. You know, I was committed to run the payroll before and all the bills because I wasn't going to use loan funds again to pay bills. So I was hoping to offset that. So 20% of my 1.2 million was exclusive to that building. Not my equipment, but that building and getting it ready to produce product. And I think I asked you for 40 to 80,000, which quite frankly is, I know, rather direct. But that comes from about six months of payroll and bills that I'm running through my construction company so I don't have to use loan money to do this. But, you know, the fire suppression system is 80,000 and we just paid it and it's almost done and it looks great. You know, these guys have been power washing this building and pulling out rot and it looks great. The floors are looking better. We've put a water line in. I mean, we've got the exterior being graded, but we'd like to paint it. But I don't know that I can afford to paint it. It might sound dumb. Six, eight thousand dollars would go a long way and just painting the front of the building, you know? But I'm scared of my own shadow until I know when's TVA going to come through with the incentive that they awarded us and is there any help available with IDB? Because again, and Scotty can tell you, my wife and I are probably working 70 hours a week to just cash flow that. And we love it, you know, the opportunity. I'm not complaining. But, you know, it's a little bit exhausting and we're just trying to fine tune those last things that we can spend. And part of knowing what we can spend is knowing if there's any help. So.
I want to thank you for coming before us. I know what it's like to invest all of your life savings and your efforts in a startup company. Personally, I've done that a few times. I believe you've knocked on our door at the most appropriate time. But we are in the development stage of how we're going to create and utilize the funds that we have for the future of this community. I, if I can make the request, I would love to see you get into the minutia a little bit for us. Fill up that application that we just approved tonight. Bring back your blueprints. Because I, I would love to see us be able to do something, but we, we really need to see a little bit more. Don't know what we can do or anything. But we're going, I believe we're going to make it part of the prerequisite for everyone coming to us for any kind of funds is to fill out this application. And it, feel free to reach back out to me since I'm the one who like created this, if that's okay, or and.
You two may want to swap, make sure you swap emails this evening and.
But stay in the loop with, with Morgan's well so that we're, Mr. Wheeler, so we are all in compliance.
And I think Carson, I told you when you first requested that we as an industrial development board did not have a mechanism to share any monies with anybody.
Sure.
It would have been a case-by-case basis. And in order to standardize that and put any entrepreneur through the same set of hoops.
Sure.
We needed to create our application process.
I agree. Because we have eight, nine, and 10. All are associated with funding other individuals endeavors. And so I think this is, we, you just happen to be one of the first ones knocking on the door. So we would like for you to be the. We would like for you to go forward without that. If I can, if I need to make a, if you need a motion for that or anything, I'd be glad to. And I look forward to seeing more of what you've got coming.
Heather will make a few last edits and kind of clean up the application and then it can be emailed to you.
I'd like for it to come from you based on.
I don't object to that.
So I'll forward that back to you.
I've got your email.
Yeah, we'll, we'll turn it around pretty quick. It's pretty important to us just in making some final decisions if, if it's a possibility, you know? And, and we have already a third-party CPA who's involved that we're happy to let you speak to about anything. And then Pathways Lending is who actually funded us, if any of you know who that is. But they're the, like, I think it's called a CDFI to help rural communities or I don't know what the classification is, but you know, the money comes to do that.
I think you've met some requirements for a grant or loan from TVA. I don't know which it is.
The TVA Performance Grant.
I think that's in the application. So if you'll just fill that out and let us know what's coming your way and what you're working on, we appreciate it much, Lee. I'm interested to find out. So what are all grants?
it has been very difficult to go through because there are so many groups and so many programs. But what applies? What can you use? What can't you use? Why can't you use these two? It's very difficult. So in, in all of the conversation about, you know, how to do that, having someone like Scott who maybe could have more time to actually be like, come on, buddy. Because it was, it was difficult. It really was. There are so many, who's MTIDA versus the IDB versus this? And so that part for me still, I wonder if I have actually taken advantage of my opportunities. I really don't know and it's very hard. But Will at TVA has been the most excellent and dantid, common at Tennessee Central. Those two guys should be commended because they've done more than enough to try to help me through it. And even they've confused them. So, so I just wanted to make that part known that it was, it was pretty stressful to figure out.
I can understand. So how, how old is this equipment that you received? The core, the core beast that you received?
The model was built in 2004 and it ran production in, uh, Corona, California until 2009. And it was shipped to Missouri when a, a company consolidated that was making FDA product. And then they got bought out by, I think that, is it Johnson and Johnson or somebody really big? And they just, what are we paying for storage on? And we looked at this machine six years ago for the last guy we worked for and tried to sell the same. And he chose to go a heavily financed route that didn't work out so well. So this has been a plan forever.
The machine has been completely redone.
My next question, so.
Yes, in, in, I think, 2009 or 10. And it only ran for a couple of years after that. So it's just, it, it's, it's in perfect performing condition. After we made it all back together.
I see if you guys would like to get it in?
Yeah, we're in the process of just painting some of the things. We ran through a lot of the wiring, checked wires. And we've mainly been waiting for this main component that all the plastic actually goes through. And, and that thing itself, I mean, it was more than my house. So I can't wait to see it and get it. But when all these things come together around Thanksgiving, we're going to have some burning plastic down there and it's going to be a great day. That's really what our focus in the business plan is right now is to get to where that machine is capable and we can pass an eye test with any one of the smaller tank manufacturers for a low volume. Someone to come in and just get some money in the door. And then our contracted customer will come on in quarter two with the majority of the volume, so.
Any other questions, Carson?
Refresh my memory. How much for manufacturing? How much for storage?
There's about 8,000 square foot that will be dedicated to production and some assembly and pack out. And then the break room's part of that area too. But the rest is, and we don't need all of it for raw material, but we'll obviously spread things out and make it very efficient and ergonomic for things not to have to be stacked tight because we just don't have to.
So are you going with both buildings or just?
It's the complete 32,000.
It had a common floor in the 32,000 foot square foot building. It was just two steel buildings that were initially merged again.
Thank you.
Other questions? Thank you all for coming tonight. That brings me to the end of our written agenda. Are there other things that need to be brought? Paul Dwight.
One thing I had to say to me, to make sure probably most of you are aware of it, that Facebook has just announced a facility over in Gallatin. Yes, uh, 982,000 square feet, an $800 million investment. Be about 1,100 construction jobs. And they're saying approximately 100 full-time jobs. The thing that I wanted to bring out in that that seems to get lost in the fine print, there was $19.5 million in tax concessions from Sumner County and Gallatin in order to be able to get that facility there. Sometimes that gets lost, but, uh, just keep that in mind that when we're going forward with these projects, they go hand in hand with those type of concessions.
And the pilot that we were looking at.
Is a big part of that.
Would be a part of that and would address some of these tax concessions that Dwight's talking about.
But that will impact us. That's going to impact our county and our, and our city because you're talking 15 miles down the road to where this is going to be from where we're sitting. It's a major, major investment. You're familiar with where it's at, it's over there near where they just did the Beretta.
North side of the city of Gallatin.
Yeah.
Toward Bethpage.
Yeah. And I'm sure there'll be more to come.
Other comments? We had agreed at last month's meeting that we would meet monthly for a while until we cleared some things off of our working agenda. So that would mean the next meeting, September 15th at 5:00 PM. And assuming we can get the office here, we'll meet at the mayor's office. If for some reason we can't, then we'll give you an alternate location in advance.
Make a motion to adjourn?
I say a motion to adjourn. Thank you.
Mr. Walsh wasn't here, so I thought it was his role.
When you start thinking like him, uh, what are your troubles?
He's always a bird.
I said adjourned and I thought it meant we could take our masks off for a second.
That too.